I would like to welcome Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development and his colleagues for attending this sessions to respond to questions on communications and technology. Members, if you want to speak, please press the Request to Speak button. If you want to follow up a reply from the government, please refer to the reply serial number at the upper right-hand corner. Secretary, over to you for a brief introduction. Chairman, I will highlight the main points in the policy area of communications and technology. On broadcasting, we continue to promote the development of digital terrestrial television and digital audio broadcasting in Hong Kong. The two free TV licenses will continue to optimize their DTT network to bring the coverage on par with that of the analog TV broadcasting by the end of this year. We will also continue to organize publicity campaigns to further boost up the DTT take-up rate as well as promote the DAB service. On telecommunications, the second public consultation on the arrangement for the frequency spectrum upon expiry of existing assignments for 3G mobile services in October 2016 is ongoing. The three-and-a-half-month consultation period will come to an end tomorrow. We will analyze the views received carefully in order to map out the way forward. The budget mentions that the government would proactively provide appropriate support for emerging industries with the potential to develop. Cultural and creative industries are one of the emerging industries, contributing nearly $90 billion or 4.7% to local GDP in 2011. The number of persons engaged in the industries exceeds $190,000. Cultural creative industries are very important for Hong Kong's industry. We continue to run this Create Smart Initiative and inject an additional $300 million into the CSI so as to provide support for the trade-to-anatech programs and nurture talents, expand markets, build brands, and stage large-scale creative events to develop Hong Kong into Asia's creative capital. We seek funding approval from the Finance Committee later on. We will also launch the first feature film initiative to support those filmmakers with no prior experience in directing commercial films to implement their first commercial film projects. On innovation and technology, we will implement a number of new measures this year. This will include, A, we'll provide funding support to sixteen universities engaging in technological research and development. Each of them, we provide over maximum $4 million per annum for three years in order to enhance the universities' capabilities in technology transfer as well as commercialization, realization of research and development results. B, to enhance the funding support for the partner state key laboratories in Hong Kong by increasing the existing ceiling of $2 million per annum to $5 million per annum until 2015-16. And C, to provide funding support to Hong Kong branch of Chinese National Engineering Research Centre, CNYOC. CNYOC will be provided over maximum $5 million per annum for three years in order to enhance its capabilities in conducting research projects. On hardware support, Phase III development of science park will be completed in stages from 2014 to 2016, increasing the growth for area by some 50%. The Hong Kong Science and Technology Parks Corporation will also continue to revitalize the three existing industrial estates while as exploring the feasibility of expanding the Yunnan Industrial Estate to meet the long-term development of the high-tech industry. On promotion of testing and certification services, the Hong Kong Council for Testing and Certification just completed a comprehensive review of the implementation progress of a three-year industry development plan at the end of March 2013 and proposed to government a series of recommendations to support further development of testing and certification industry. Government would later brief the panel on commerce industry of this council on the details of Hong Kong CTC's review findings and recommendations. As regards information technology, the estimated nonrecurrent expenditure for the government on computerization in 2013-14 amounts to $2.25 billion, which is 62% above the sum of $1.39 billion in the previous financial year. The increased provision will help enhance public service and create new business opportunities for the IT industry. IT has been developing rapidly in Hong Kong over the past few years, adding impetus to the local economic and social development. In view of the technological advancement, we must continue to seize all opportunities. As such, we are conducting a comprehensive review on the Digital 21 strategy so as to formulate a blueprint for IT developments in Hong Kong to meet the evolving needs of the community. We will hold the first International IT Fest in Hong Kong from the eighth to the twenty-first of this month, featuring a variety of information and communications technology events. International IT Fest 2013 will showcase Hong Kong's flourishing development as an IT hub. Cloud computing is a major future development trend. We invest more than $200 million on the implementation of government cloud platform over the next five years. The first phase of GovCloud is expected to be rolled out by the end of this year to enable more agile and cost-effective delivery of e-government services, including electronic information management, human resource management, and e-procurement. On the other hand, the one-stop info cloud portal we launched in January this year provides useful references for both cloud consumers and service providers, especially small and medium enterprises, to facilitate the selection, management, and provision of cloud services. To assist SMEs in making good use of ICT, we continue to work with the industry and professional bodies to implement sector-specific programs. We are also exploring measures to facilitate a local industry to provide appropriate software and services to SMEs through the use of cloud computing so as to enhance the adoption of IT among SMEs and facilitate the development of digital economy. Chairman, my colleagues and I stand ready to answer questions from members. Thank you. Thank you. Members, please press the button if you want to speak. Otherwise, I will have to cut the time for later questions. This session will take us up to 5:30. To play safe, I will give each member four minutes because I expect some members would be pressing the button at a later stage. Mr. Charles Moore, I want to follow up CDBCT 103. Two nights ago, some awards on ICT were awarded and the guest of honor was the CE. Some award winners were very happy, but they also had worries because in the past few years, they have witnessed similar experience. They have limited resources, but they have been able to reach out to international markets and they have been able to win major awards in the Asia-Pacific region. When our people win awards, the governments will always be very happy, but they have to expand resources to take part in competitions. These companies are the best among the best, and not all of them have the resources to participate in international events. Can some assistance be provided to these companies? Of course, you don't need to provide support to big corporations, but what about the smaller ones? You reply to talk about support to students and nonprofit organizations. But what about emerging SMEs? Can some consideration be given to the provision of support to them? I would like to defer to our government chief information officer, Mr. Lai.
at present, we only provide support or subsidy to nonprofit organizations because it's difficult for us to judge whether a company would have some needs in participating in overseas award events. So the current policy is that we would provide support to nonprofit service organizations only. I understand this is your current policy. I just want the administration to amend the policy. Maybe marketing funds can be utilized, but the next time, they will have no other way to participate. We should look at the nature of the events concerned. Let me now turn to my second question, is CDBCT 025. It's about previously unsolicited electronic messages. According to the reply, there have been only been a few cases of confusion. But people are very confused that they don't know there is such confusion. Some telecommunications or companies have been reacting to the amendment to the PTPO. People have been receiving messages lately that information or data collected to that business will be used for promotion, business promotion. Actually, in the licensing conditions, this is prohibited. I think the communications authorities should take the initiative to intervene and tell the telecommunications not to do this. Your time is up. Dr. Lo Wai Kwok. I have a complaint. I follow your instructions and I press the button as soon as you ask us to press the button, but I'm number eight. Well, you can, we can handle your complaint outside the meeting. Time is pressing here. Dr. Lo Wai Kwok. Well, the first thing covered in the secretary's opening remarks is broadcasting and TV. Earlier on, this council passed a motion, which was amended by me, that the TV licenses should be issued by the end of March this year. So I would like to get a response later. I would like to follow up the reply C062. It's about the research support, a subsidy to support local companies in engaging researchers, local academics. But there was no application in the past three years. Has the administration ascertained why the response has been so low? So I would like to get an answer on this as well. I understand members would like us to expeditiously deal with the free TV license applications. All I can say is that we are moving as fast as we can and the CE in council is dealing with the matter because of the confidentiality. All I can say that we would deal with the applications expeditiously, as expeditiously as we can. The next one question, I'll defer to the Innovation and Technology Commission. This matching grant for this industrial research chair scheme is a subsidy scheme whereby the company will provide 50% of the cost and will be providing the remaining 50. The matching grant for joint research has been popular. We have received many applications, but the industry research chair scheme is not very well received. We have tried to ask why because professors are very busy and it's difficult for them to make use of this scheme and they have a lot of administrative work to handle. They're concerned that they may not be able to cope. We know that we have been providing more resources to universities to do more applied research. We encourage university professors to be bold to be, so that they can be involved more extensively in applied technology. The response is not very good because of the concerns on the part of university professors. If the response is not good, would you be willing to change the subsidy scheme so as to make it more popular? Of course, it's good to provide more resources to universities. They all have applied science departments, but this is nothing new.
Ms. Wong. In fact, under the industrial research chair scheme, there are three elements. Or should I say, for this program, for this entire program, the three schemes, I mean, under the UICP, the first two are very popular. The industrial research chair scheme is not popular. The UGC attaches great importance to technology transfer and so more support has been given. Time's up, Ms. Wong. Please give me more information in writing. Yes, that can be done. Mr. Wong Kwok Hing. Chairman, I've got two questions for the secretary. First of all, concerning the frequency spectrum and the second public consultation exercise for the frequency spectrum upon the expiry of the existing assignments for 3G mobile services, I want you to look at the health hazards associated with radio frequency. I think we are lagging behind Shenzhen although Shenzhen made a later start. Now, in fact, I think Shenzhen is 50 times more advanced than we are with regard to the attention it gives to hazards related to radio frequency. So we have to look at the health hazards and the health implications. Then, second, concerning the industrial estate. You mentioned the industrial estates in your opening speech. So you're proposing to revitalize the existing three industrial estates. So will you consider setting up the fourth industrial estate? Is this possible? I understand that the government wants to develop Chinese medicine. You want to promote GMP for the Chinese medicine sector and Chinese medicine manufacturers have come to Ledgeco to add their grievances. They say it's very difficult for them to find suitable premises. So can you try to give some support to the local Chinese medicine manufacturing industry? Can you provide an industrial estate tailor-made for Chinese medicine manufacturing? So will there be the fourth industrial estate in Hong Kong? I think, Chairman, I would like to invite my colleague to give a reply and she is Director General of Communications. I believe Ms. Wong is talking about electromagnetic fields. Now, concerning the safety issue, we are not the expert, but then we've consulted the Department of Health and we have adopted radiation standards put forward by an international organization on non-ionized radiation. So we do take measurements at different radio stations and our monitoring has so far indicated that our electromagnetic radiation has been in compliance of international standards. We are lagging behind Shenzhen. I think we don't have any time for this second question, secretary. Now, Chairman, we are trying to revitalize the existing industrial estates and I think our efforts have borne fruit. And concerning trying to identify more land for industrial estate use, we are exploring the feasibility of expanding the Yunnan Industrial Estate. And then what about having an industrial estate to help the Chinese medicine manufacturing industry? Now, in fact, there is a place called Wang Chow right next to the Yunnan Industrial Estate. We will, Commissioner, I'm afraid you'll have to give a written reply to the member. Mr. Martin Liu. Chairman, I want to first of all follow up on CT 015. Concerning the Film Loan Fund, very few people are interested in this fund, or I mean, the Film Guarantee Fund. This is because more people are interested in the Film Development Fund. In the past years, about $150 million was provided. But then, concerning the use of the fund, I want to know whether you will look at the use of the fund, whether it should be used for subsidizing production or what other aspects. And then I would like to follow up on 059. I think my question has not been answered. Why is it that you are only estimating a 3% increase in technology transfer? Now, you know, the cash rebate scheme, I mean, the percentage will be at an attractive 30%. So I think in 2013, the technology transfer level should remain encouraging. Why is it that you are estimating that the number of technology transfer in 2013 will only increase by about 3%? Yes, Deputy Secretary. Now, concerning the Film Guarantee Fund, we're going to have a review towards the end of the year. We are open-minded and we will not rule out the possibility of merging the Film Guarantee Fund and the Film Development Fund. Now, in fact, we look at the number of applications in granting funds. If the committee is of the view that all the criteria are met, then funding will be approved. And I want to say that in fact, 28 applications were approved. Ms. Wong. Technology transfer takes time, Chairman. From the left to the bench, there is a need to raise funds and to do scaling up. We do not anticipate a major breakthrough in the near future, but as we are promoting technology transfer among universities and also we have the cash rebate scheme. In fact, two months ago, we reported to the panel that we would see improvements in the long run because the numbers rose quite significantly within one year. But then, at this stage, I will not predict a very significant increase, but I think we'll continue to work hard in this regard. Mr. Liu. Yes, I wish to follow up. Why is it that the increase percentage will be reduced from 21% to 3%? Now, Chairman, concerning the S3, it concentrates on technology transfer. Two years ago, we worked on LED and also solar energy projects in hospitals. But of course, the situation varies from year to year. If Mr. Liu is interested in the details, I can provide him with the details. Mr. Sin Chung Kai. Now, I supported Mr. Lo Wai Kwok's amendment because I thought he had news that a license would be approved within the first quarter. And I won't repeat this question. I understand you will be repeating the same answer, secretary. Number 36, Chairman. The spectrum. I want to follow up on Mr. Wong Yook Man's question. Now, you have no plans to release the remaining three band three multiplexes. So will you release the multiplexes if people are interested? Or is it that you will not release these multiplexes despite expressions of interest? And then I've got a question concerning Wi-Fi service and that's a follow-up to my question 111. In fact, that question has not been answered. So this is the second-generation Wi-Fi service. I want to know the coverage in government premises and venues. So can you provide the information? I think Ms. Lee can answer the first question. Or the permanent secretary, please.
Yes, concerning DAB, digital audio broadcasting, we are only making a start. We will monitor the situation and the development and we will then decide on the arrangements for the remaining three-band three multiplexes. And so, for the time being, we have no plans to release them. We will consider what to do after the AB has developed to a certain level. And then, Mr. Lai. Now, for libraries, we have 67 and then public inquiry centers, 20, employment centers, 12, and then sports centers or venues, 100. So I can give the member a detailed breakdown after the meeting. Now, Chairman, I just want to know, or I understand that you have expanded the service a bit, but then there is an ever-increasing demand for Wi-Fi service. Some people do use 3G and 4G servers to access the internet, but then the reception at certain government venues may not be very good and so they, people need to make use of the government's Wi-Fi service. So do you have a target percentage in mind concerning coverage? And then, permanent secretary. It said that if people apply to operate a DAB service, you will not allow that? Will not consider such applications for the time being? We've just made a start concerning DAB and we want DAB to develop to a certain level first. Then, Mr. Lai. We look at the patronage level. We also look at the utilization level and whether we have a lot of members of the public visiting those government premises. And so, how many percent of the demand has been met? You talk about heavily patronized government premises. What is your definition? 5,000 visitors per day? So we've got this indicator. But of course, this is not a fixed target or indicator. We keep on monitoring the situation. Ms. Priscilla Long.
Yes, Chairman, I want to follow up on the reply 012. Now, according to the secretary, the fund is not suitable to be used for the acquisition of TV broadcasting rights, for example, World Cup broadcasting rights. But then, I understand that under the Mega Events Fund, $15 million have been allocated for golf. At the moment, only those who have subscribed to pay-TV service can watch World Cup matches and many members of the public want the government to try to benefit members of, or to benefit the public. You know, mainlanders can watch World Cup matches on free TV. how can the government make sure that the public will be able to watch World Cup events or matches on free TV?
Secretary, well, World Cup is a mega event, but it's not a mega event in Hong Kong. Mega Events Fund is about attracting mega events to come to Hong Kong. It was spent If we spend public money on a commercial program, a commercial sports event, then we have to consider what are the needs of our people and how can we compete with commercial operators for the broadcasting rights? We believe such broadcasting rights should be left to the commercial bidding. Yes, Mega Events Fund is about attracting mega events to Hong Kong. I note that. But can you be more open minded? Other people have criticized you about how the Mega Events Fund is utilized. Many people don't know those events which have taken place in Hong Kong. People would like to get mega event which is enjoyed by all people. Can you be open minded and don't just say that it's commercial? The mainland is doing this. It's free on the mainland. And this is also good for the market, for making the market more vibrant. And people have a lot of grievances. Maybe you can do something to the flexibility respond to such a request and don't just say the no point blank. Actually, this subject has been raised by members and discussed here many times. And there are the innovative ideas as regards whether we should restrict the broadcasting to free TV stations. But I think we all agreed on one principle. Commercial events like this should best be broadcast by commercial broadcasters. I don't know whether members agree or whether we all agree that the government should change its mindset. Ms. Elizabeth Quat. I have four follow up questions. If they cannot be answered in time, please provide written replies. First question, C T one oh eight. Support to SME in government procurement. A lot have been done to support SMEs in participating in government procurement. Whether we're talking about live maintenance in public housing estates or I T contracts. You award your contracts to the lowest bidders, leading to vicious competition. Bigger corporations can undercut other competitors by offering below cost bids. And sometimes the risk is so high that SME find it difficult to be moved. Maybe we can learn from other cities. And that is every contract should be assessed as regards the bottom line. And you will not accept any bids that offer a price below the bottom line. And you also take, should also take into account the implications for local employment and for innovation. And if you do these, SMEs will be better supported. Second, about the development of green technology is C T one five seven and zero eight zero. We have five centers for the innovation. Maybe we should have our R and D centers. It's important to Hong Kong to develop a green technology. So why, green technology industry is important. So why can't we have an R and D center on green technology? Another is C T one oh nine. It's a development Wi-Fi. Many cities develop their Wi-Fi service in their own place. But the government is only doing this for government premises. Would the government introduce a territory Wi-Fi service in Hong Kong? And there's, there's no reply on R and D investment. When will R and D investment be increased to zero point eight percent as promised in the C E's policy address so that we can be on a competitive comparison? We can comparatively competitive. Our procurement is done on a competitive and cost effective basis. And we have to comply with the W T O procurement agree, government procurement requirement. This is an international practice and it has been well established. As for the development of green technology, I defer to the Commissioner. Well, in our Nano Technology Research and Development Center, we have research projects on solar industry and this testing certification authority has also been working on green certification. We have no intention to set up a new R and D center because a lot of resources will be involved. But the I T C fund, I T fund may do something to promote green technology. As for the share of G D P, the C E said that this percentage would apply to the public sector. Your time is up. Perhaps you can reply in writing in regard to questions three and four. I want to mark Mr. Fah Fung Kuo. I want to follow up zero one nine and one four seven. Zero one nine is about the D A B. I asked the administration whether it's aware of the audience ship. And the answer is no. I find it difficult to understand. Because if you want to gauge whether the D A B is successful or not, one of the most important indicators is the number of audience, the list number listeners. It's been three years and still the government is unaware of the number of listeners and it has not conducted any survey on this. And there's a steering committee on D A B. I asked about the composition. I'm given the compass, how the D A B steering committee is composed, but no names have been provided. Other boards and committees have the names of the members properly to announce. But what about this, the D A B? I also asked about specific measures to promote this. And the answer is appropriate measures will be taken. That's not an answer. And then I want to talk about creative industries. And I asked this question of the C D B. But the reply states that part of it fall under the purview of the H A B. There's an overlapping with the H A B in relation to the creative, the cultural industries. For example, Hong Kong International Female Festival used to be subvented by the H A B and now it's subvented by the C D B. Why and what are the criterias? And for short film event by for secondary schools is under the C D B. But we are talking about students, not commercial productions. Why shouldn't it be put under the H A B? As for the number of listeners of D A B's business, we don't have any statistics based on surveys. So we cannot provide the figures. We'll be working on a number of fronts to support the D A B service. For example, we will spend money through public funding. We would ensure the reception of D A B signal in tunnels. And there are also promotion activities. Together with D A B stations, we have been doing promotion and publicizing some, the superior sound quality of D A B signal. And in terms of infrastructure, we have been doing a lot in setting up transmission stations and also to coordinate with the mainland on the allocation of spectrum. What about the composition of the steering committee? Why can't it be make public? Well, the steering committee is there to coordinate between us and the D A B operators. I'm the chair. All the D A B service providers, including the R T H K's members. Can you provide the list? Yes. Miss Quatia Mo. Many people like to watch Korean drama series. But I won't be suggesting the government should purchase Korean drama programs for public consumption. So that's why I find it really laughable that Ms. Priscilla Leng would like to ask the administration to buy the broadcasting right for the World Club. Well, I don't want to refer to any reply because it's not an answer at all. They are talking about established procedures. But the key words are there's no delay. Well, they are talking Chinese in accordance with English grammar. That's very chinglish. You are unable to issue the licenses after three years. And for the C E in council part, it's been more than one year. So you're trying to delude yourself and everyone else that there's been no delay. But it's so meaningless. I just want to remind you by bringing this up. Let me turn to C E D B, C T one two six, R T H K. We have civil servants and non-civil servants. Their pay can be very different. The difference is very big. For a program officer, the starting pay is twenty six thousand. If you're a non-civil service, servant, non-civil service. For civil servants, it's forty three thousand dollars, a difference of seventeen thousand dollars. So we have a one station and two pay systems. Of course, it may be regarded as a successful divide and rule tactic. And it's the same in other departments. But we know R T H K is not an ordinary government department. It's not like, say, the Housing Department, which has to follow the housing policy of the S A R government. The R T H K doesn't have to follow government policy on publicity. It has editorial, it enjoys editorial independence. Well, it's been said that civil servants in R T H K would not like to make an R T H K independent or independent body. Of course, because if you consider the pay difference, we have seen a number of incidents. The M T Chair of City Forum, the headline, headliners, and we have the director, who is paid one hundred ninety thousand dollars. Much, it's lower than what I expected. I didn't check previously. Director of Broadcasting, you have lost all your public credibility. The Democratic Party has conducted a survey and nearly half of them think that you tried to pressurize your subordinates. So have you considered resigning? Second, if you don't want to resign, would you agree that in the coming year, your pay should be cut? I'm, I'm going to move an amendment on behalf of the Civic Party. Director, well, I won't resign. I don't agree to a pay cut. Mr. Yu Si Wing. It's one one four. Government Wi-Fi is available in government premises. The new one would cover Yamate Theater and Kai Te Cruise Terminal. But the government is not going to do anything or is unable to do anything about tourist attractions not under the control of the government. But what about Ocean Park? The Disneyland theme park? Or Wantai Shin Temple and other temples?
And my second question relates to reply number one one five. Now, in the second quarter, a new mobile apps will be launched to publicize activities at government venues, including activities at the Letch Call. But can you expand the scope to cover non-government activities and also activities in commercial premises?
Secretary. Chairman, in fact, when we applied for funding from Finance Committee for launching Gov Wi-Fi, we made it very clear that we were not trying to compete with the business sector. And so Gov Wi-Fi would only be provided at government premises and venues. So in fact, we did give this explanation to members many times. And then perhaps Mr. Li can say something about expanding the coverage of the mobile apps. Now concerning these mobile apps, it will be launched next week. It's called Event Finder. And in phase one, we'll only provide information on events organized by the government or held at government venues. As to whether we can go a step further, we will have to have discussions with the organizations concerned. But then I want to say that we do provide the information or the data through the audio status. And so such information can be read by members of the public. But then the government has a share in O P and also Disneyland. So I can accept your explanation concerning other venues or organizations. But then concerning Disneyland charitable organizations, I think Gov Wi-Fi should cover these places. I think the administration should consider this suggestion. Secretary, the O P is a statutory corporation. I mean, the board. So it's not a government body. And then for the Disney Company, it's a business. And we do not compete for profit with private sector Wi-Fi service providers. Mr. Leng Sing, I want to follow up on replies number one two seven and one two eight. These questions relate to the R T H K. We are told that in one three one four, the expenditure will increase and that will be an increase of twenty one percent over the revised estimate of the last financial year. And it's higher than the increase in total expenditure. In other words, fifteen point four percent. In fact, many people say on following programs in the morning that the viewpoints expressed in R T H programs are biased. And we're talking about use of public funds. And it's dangerous if the views expressed are biased. and it's dangerous if the views expressed are biased. So I would like to know whether you are trying to let R T H K withhold silently and gradually. This is an allegation made by the opposition party. Mr. Tang, in fact, in this financial year, there will be a substantial increase in funding. We're talking about twenty-one percent. And then nineteen percent increase in manpower resources. And as far as I understand, this level of increase in manpower resources is the highest among government departments. So we cannot accept the allegation that we're trying to let R T H K withhold silently. Now, under the charter, we have to provide a fair platform for people to express their different views. And we will be holding on to this principle. And Chairman, C T one-two-eight, concerning board programs and also contracting out, can I know more about these plans? And I want to know, you allow complete editorial freedom. Will you intervene? Will there still be biased views expressed? In fact, we started purchasing in twenty-oh-one. Last year, we spent about seven million dollars. Now, in the coming financial year, we are going to start D T T service. So I'm talking about, just now I was talking about acquisition. So we have to, the amount depends on whether we are able to find quality programs. Now, of course, we do provide current affairs programs, entertainment programs, documentaries. But then concerning programs, the nature of these programs, the source of these programs, we adopt consistent standards concerning what they should be. And then it is said that there are twenty civil service posts to replace non-civil service contract positions. But then Ms. Mo said that, in fact, civil servants were paid more than contract staff. Now, Ms. Mo said that what Ms. Priscilla Leng said about the World Cup events was laughable. But then Ms. Claudia Moe also mentioned the Korean drama and then also a World Cup. I want to say that we should not target our criticism at any person. We should look at the issue itself. And then may I refer to question zero to five. So we know when people are asked whether they want to receive the electronic messages or whether they want their personal data to be used for certain purposes. Now, if these people refuse, they have to send a reply back to the companies concerned. And many people are discontented because they will have to send the replies to the companies. So can the companies provide more user-friendly ways for people to send their replies? And also, when, say, people are in the mainland, when they are using roaming service, they receive electronic messages. And these are advertising or promotion messages. So will you, will you take a fresh look at the no-call arrangements? I mean, people-to-people, not only messages. I think on privacy matters, I will ask the C M A B to follow up. And then person-to-person cold calls. In fact, we have had several rounds of discussion in the I T B panel. In fact, some improvements have been made. For example, there is some code. It was launched in June twenty-eleven, and four associations have voluntarily signed to subscribe to the code. And since then, we have seen a drop in the number of complaints. Now, in fact, over twenty thousand people work in this field. So we also have to consider this aspect. For the time being, we have no intention to include person-to-person cold calls in the legislation. The secretary said that there was a reduction in number of complaints. Can you give me the figures? And he said that there were about twenty thousand employees in the field. And where should the balance be struck, can I ask? On the one hand, public interest and public demands. On the other hand, the interests of the industry and the employees. Now, I understand that there is a need to promote business activities. At the same time, we have to try to minimize the nuisance cost to members of the public. And that's why the four associations have already voluntarily subscribed to the code. So they are committed to minimizing any nuisance caused to members of the public. Now, concerning the timing for the cold calls and so on and so forth, all these will help reduce the nuisance. Mr. Chen Chi-Jun, I want to follow up on reply oh-oh-one, the Film Guarantee Fund. Chairman, the utilization rate of the fund has been on the low side. We have only had single-digit number of applications. According to the secretary, there was a review. In fact, it was a questionnaire survey. But a review means looking at inadequacies and areas of improvement. But then it is said that the results of the questionnaire survey showed that the trade generally found the fund effective in assisting local film production companies in obtaining loan financing for film production. And the majority of the trade agreed to ordinarily object to the view of keeping the operation of the fund in its existing mode. So I think you really should review whether that review was effective. So you did not look at why the utilization rate was low. The conclusion you came to was it was better to have the scheme than not having the scheme. So what is your response, Secretary? Chairman, the Film Development Fund, under the fund, there was the Scheme for Financing Film Production. It was launched in twenty-oh-seven. So many applied for the Financing Film, Scheme for Financing Film Production under the F D F, and as a result, they did not apply to the F G F. So we, in the review, looked at whether we should still have the F G F. And we felt that it would be good to have, still have the F G F. But then we are going to review the F D F in the second half of the year, and we will take the opportunity to look at whether the F G F should still exist. And Chairman, I want to now follow up on reply zero-eight-one. Wi-Fi, Gov Wi-Fi. I understand many members have asked this question. I think we are lagging behind in this regard when we compare ourselves to, say, Taiwan. Now, we are told that government will extend this service to about forty additional government premises in twenty-thirteen, fourteen. I would like to know how many government venues are still not covered by Gov Wi-Fi. This part of my question has not been answered. I'm only told that the government will continue to explore the feasibility of extending the service to suitable premises. I understand that the government doesn't want to compete for profit with the business sector. But then the progress, please. I want to know about the progress with regard to Wi-Fi service for government venues.
Mr. Li, we have to strike a balance concerning the cost-effectiveness. If we have a Gov Wi-Fi everywhere, it may not be cost-effective. We will look at the government buildings in question. How many people are using the government premises in question? For those with sufficiently high patronage. Well, we have extended the coverage from four hundred to four hundred and forty premises. And we believe we can cater to the general needs. But that's not the end of it. We continue to assess whether there is more demand. There is a growing demand in government premises. So you don't have any target for the next round? We are covering four hundred and forty. In the coming year, we are going to increase forty government premises over the existing four hundred. We are going to provide Wi-Fi in four hundred and forty premises. Mr. Christopher Chung, do you, does the administration understand the relationship between industry and arts? I'm following up question one-four, reply one-four-seven. In the table, you have only film. What about other visual arts? And we are going to have a big event at Basel. Major auction house, art galleries, curators will be gathering in Hong Kong for curfew activities. Has the C E D B missed out on this opportunity to promote or to create business opportunities for the creative and cultural industries in Hong Kong? And we want to develop our market. The market, the mainland market is a big market. Other countries and Taiwan are watching with great interest on how to gain access to the mainland market. Can we deplore officials who are knowledgeable about culture to provide assistance to local artists and people working in the cultural and creative industries to gain access to the mainland market? That is a part of the film industry and the music industry. Well, cultural development falls under the ambit of the H A B. But for the development of cultural and creative industries, I'll defer to Mr. Liu. Mr. Liu.
Maybe I can say something about the different sectors in the creative sector. There was a survey conducted by the S A R government in two thousand and three. It was based on the U K and the European countries' categorization of the demarcation standards for different industries within the cultural and creative sector. Performing arts, visual arts, including painting, sculpture, are categorized as performing culture in these countries. As for designs, popular music and design, they are grouped under creative industries as part of the industrial sector. And that is, they have the ability to operate on their own. But on the contrary, performing arts would require some government support. So perhaps I can respond to Mr. Chung's question in this way. Well, you should not segregate culture and industries like that. Why visual arts and performing arts cannot be part of our industries? Look at the revenue generated by the musicals in other places. Our time is up. We have only got one member who can ask questions in the second round. Mr. Charles Smoak, three minutes. I want to follow up a point not covered previously, unsolicited electronic messages. And I talk about the confusion with the P D P O. People are very confused. And Mr. Stephen Ho raised a similar question, reflecting that many citizens and people who read the law are confused. I, I agree, I agree with him that unsolicited electronic messages should cover person-to-person communication, and that should be consultation. I quote an example in my previous questions. And some members have already said that recently some telecommunications service providers sent messages to their clients saying that the data have been collected in the course of providing services, including the website addresses and the like, may be used for the business promotion. And I've noticed that in the license, the service provider is not allowed to use data collected in the course of service provision for other purposes. I think the communications authority should be aware of this. Are you going to liaise with the privacy commissioner on dealing with such cases? Or are you saying that it's all right for telecommunications service providers to gather such data from their clients and use such data for marketing purposes? Are you saying that it's allowed, even given that there are restrictions imposed by the license? That's my question. Who will take the question, Ms. Lee? Well, when the licenses were issued, the P D P O was not yet enacted. So the protection of privacy is covered by the P D P O and is enforced by the privacy commissioner since the enactment of the P D P O. Whether it's the telecommunications sector or other sectors, privacy matters are regulated by the privacy commissioner. What about my example? The telecommunications service providers would like to use the data collected during service provision. Is that against the licensing conditions? Well, there are codes on the, codes regulating the collection of principal. I believe if they do this, that they will violate some of the principles on data collection under the P D P O. The next section.